Welcome to the special meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is June 14, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Costin?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Stanky?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item four, citizens' input time. A maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input. Citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record or anyone wishing to speak during citizens' input. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Item five is new business. We're here today to have a discussion on 5A, city attorney selection. I think it's important first maybe to kind of set the ground rules how we're going to conduct the interviews for the three candidates that we have. I'll tell you what we have done in the past with our city manager's position. Typically, we would invite each of the candidates individually. Typically, I think we gave them a short period of time for like an introduction statement. And then after the introduction statement, we would give each council member time to ask a certain amount of questions that's pre-designated. So in other words, I think if I recall correctly, each council member had a opportunity to ask two questions, if I recall correctly, with the city manager selection. And we would go down, go down the list for those questions. It's not that you have to ask a question because maybe your question may have already been asked. So it just gives you the opportunity for two questions. Once that's completed, maybe give them a closing statement. I do believe that, in my opinion, we should maybe set some parameters for time for the opening statement, the closing statement, and do we want to set a response time for the questions that we ask. So with that being said, I'll open up the discussion to see exactly how we wish to move forward as a body. So I'm open for any suggestions. Or we, if we're going to continue in that fashion, maybe we'll talk about time limits. If we do want to put a time limit, and if we do, what the amount of time should be. Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'd like to continue with what you did with the city managers, if that's okay.
Is everybody in agreement as far as the format's concerned? Come in, introduction statement, ask two questions each if we so desire. Give them an opportunity for a closing statement. And the introduction statement and the closing statement or the questions, do we want to put a time limit on their response? I think that's the important part that we got to figure out.
I could see one minute for opening and closing and two for answering the questions. You know, just to get it started.
One minute's probably a little, I mean, we only have three candidates. I think a little more time for the opening and closing. Councilmember Costin?
Three minutes works for citizens' input, and I think it would work for this. Three minutes for intro and three.
And how about the answer and the questions?
I don't know if we can limit that. I mean, I guess people could go on and on. Three minutes is too long for questions, I think.
Okay. Why don't we just go down the list? Councilmember?
Well, I'm trying to do some math. We have 16, we have 16 potential questions. And how much time do we want to take up the time? You know, how much time do we have?
Right.
So 16 questions with three minutes apiece is putting us at 50 minutes.
For an.
Yeah. So that probably wouldn't work.
Right.
We'll be here for three hours.
How about?
One question.
Well, how about one question each?
That would be eight times three, twenty-four. Because I think we're all going to cover all the bases. Times three, twenty-four.
I mean, I know we've had the opportunity to meet with these individuals one-on-one. I'm sure we've asked the questions that we have had a concern or we wanted a response to. So maybe we just limit to one question per, per council member.
Yeah, I, I like one question. We've all had the chance to ask them anything we've wanted to ask. And if we want to make sure that the other seven members of our council want to make sure they heard the answer, that they should ask them that question.
So three minutes opening, three minutes closing, and two, did I hear, for the answer? Is, is that what we're thinking?
I wanted to up.
Go ahead.
I wanted to up the opening. I mean, this is an important position.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Four minutes, maybe.
All right.
I mean, it's an important position.
All right. You still stand by your, what you said, councilmember Hayden?
No, I said, I was just to get the conversation started. Started. If you want to go four minutes, you're starting to enter into the redundancy period at that point. But I have no problem with four minutes.
Councilmember Welsh?
I'm okay, three or four for the opening statement. I think most of our questions will probably want to be redundant. So one question each, if there's something new, we'll go from there. And then a closing statement of three minutes.
How about, how about response time on the question? Do we limit that?
I think three minutes is fine. You know, like I said, we've all had the opportunity to interview.
Okay.
We're just kind of getting the final, you know, public view of this. So I think we'll be brief, and they'll be brief as well.
All right. Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the four minutes.
Okay. All right. Any restriction on the answer as far as the questions on a timeline?
I'd say between two and three minutes.
Okay. Okay.
Doesn't mean they're going to use it either.
All right. Councilmember Long?
Yeah, I agree with the format. I don't think, I think that the timeline thing, that's going to resolve itself. I don't see these people sitting up here and talking. They don't want to be up there any longer than they need to be. They get their point across, I think. And yeah, the magnitude of this position, I think it's worthwhile to hear what they have to say if they feel like they do need to talk more than two minutes. But I don't think we're going to be in a situation where they're running dialogue for a period of time in which it's becoming problematic. So I'm okay with whatever timeline you'd like to impose. But I don't think that we need to be very restrictive. I think that.
Okay.
Particularly because we're working with.
How about if we do the four minutes, opening, four minutes, closing? Kind of give them the, a little bit of the free rein for the answering the question?
I think they're going to be.
Is that good?
Yeah, I think it's going to resolve itself. I don't think.
Okay. Everybody in agreement with that format?
Open forum?
I'm sorry?
Is this open forum for us right now?
Yes, sir.
I, if it were me, I only need just a couple of minutes to introduce myself and why I'm here. I'd want more time at the end, after I've heard the questions, had a chance to answer the questions, for me to sell myself at the end. So I would be more in favor of a relatively quick opening. My name is and where I'm from, and this is why I've applied. And then go through their questions, then let them sell us at the end. I don't, that's just my, just my. Counselor, if you were interviewing, what would you want to do?
Yeah, the problem, to me, if I was interviewing, the problem becomes, like I said, I think it sets itself. If you set a timeline, they would almost feel obligated to fill that. We'd almost, if you set it at four or five minutes and we've got a timer in front of them, they would almost feel like they were inadequate if they didn't fill that time. And so then you're talking about redundancies. I think that for me, I would just let them do whatever it is that they'd like to do, and that would resolve itself. Again, I don't think that we're going to run into a situation where we're all going to be sitting up here wanting to throw them off stage because they're, they're going on and on. And especially particularly considering that we're talking about attorneys who are trained to get in and get out. I don't think that we're going to be, they're going to be tripping over their own words in the interest of trying to be up there for a certain period of time. So I would just say, this is the format.
And, and no time restriction?
That's what I would suggest.
Okay.
I agree.
All right.
I think we'll be okay.
I don't think it's going to go.
All right. Everybody okay with that? All right. So that's the format. We, councilmember Costin, I'll see you right away.
I just want to talk about the questions that we're asking. If this is like the city manager interviews, I think we all ask the same question each time. Is that right? Like, we can't ask a different question of each candidate?
Well, if I recall correctly, that was what we were supposed to do. But I think that changed a little. But, you know, to me, you may want to ask one candidate one particular question yourself for some reason. You may not want to ask that same question to the next candidate. So I don't know. It's something that we have to decide to, I don't think, you know, I don't know if we have to be that specific. So that's a decision council will make, so.
I thought, I thought it was an HR regulation, but let's, if Lisa could answer, that would be great.
All right.
Here to help, that's all right. Lisa Sanego, Human Resources Director. If you, if, staying with the same type of questions, knowing that you may go down to further follow up with that person as how they are answering. Each candidate is supposed to have a very similar experience. And so you may be asking all technical questions of one and not as technical to another, and they didn't have the same experience. And so there may be possibly an issue afterwards. So kind of sticking to your mode of questions, similar background of the question would be appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that kind of tells us how the process is going to work. Let's talk a little bit about after the process is completed. You know, we'll bring the candidates back in, is what we did in, in the city managers. And then we had an open discussion collectively.
Mayor Both, that brings up a point, too. Typically, after a candidate has finished interviewing, they're allowed to stay in the room. You're suggesting that maybe once that person's interviewed, they also leave, and then we bring them back at the end? Should probably discuss that part of it, too, because.
Yeah, I mean.
They'll have to be.
Yeah, that, that aspect of it is, you know, we have two choices. They can stay in a room, or they leave, and then we bring them all back at one time. The, the reason, for me personally, I think that's a better, even though they can go back and they can watch us at a later time, I think that's fair for all three. That way, the third person, since we're doing it in alphabetical order, may have, you know, the disadvantage because he didn't hear what the other two had to say. So I think to be fair and consistent with all the candidates, for me personally, and of course, we'll make this decision collectively, is I think that they all go out, the next candidate comes in, and then we invite all three of them back into the center.
I agree with that.
I agree. I just wanted to make sure we got that point covered as well.
Everybody else okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And then we'll, we'll bring them back in. We'll have that open discussion. And then I think at some point, once that discussion is completed, we have a determination to make. One being, we, we want to choose an individual out of the three. Or the second option is if we don't feel that we have the candidate that we're looking for, then we can have a discussion if we're going to go back out, if we're going to try to get more applicants, if we are going to change the process as far as getting applicants and how that process works. So I think that's what the, the final discussion would be by each council member. Hey, I, I like candidate X, and I'm willing to move forward with that. Or there could be a council member that says, you know, I appreciate the three candidates coming forward, but for whatever reason, I would prefer to, to go out again for a second time. But just keep in mind, with that being said, if you do that, you've got three candidates that are here today that are willing to, to move forward and be the city attorney. If we decide to go out and say we don't get any other applicants, or the applicants that we have may be applying somewhere else, they, we may lose them. So I think it's very important to keep that in the back of our mind when we're making this decision because we may want to go out and we may have, okay, candidate X is the best out of the three, but let's see what else is out there. And if we happen to do that, we may lose one of the three candidates. So I just, you know, I, I thought that was worth mentioning when we go to make that decision.
So did you just want to go down the report line and get that? Or are you going to open it up for a discussion on choices?
Well, I think we'll open up for a collective discussion first. And then at some point, I will probably ask, Madam City Clerk, whatever our voting order is today, to, so each council member has the opportunity to do one of two things. Pick a candidate or suggest moving in a different direction, whatever that may be. So I think that, that would be at the end. That's our basic two choices. We either pick one, or we do something different.
Okay.
I don't know what that something different is, but I think that's our two choices. Everybody okay with that? All right. Madam City Clerk, with that being said, I see your light on. Do you have any questions? If not, we can bring in the first candidate.
Just want to clarify the process that was set. There's going to be an introduction statement, one question of, with a similar experience each time you have your question turned in order of voting, which is starting today with councilmember Long.
Okay.
A closing statement, no timer at all. And then we're going to bring a person in one at a time and escort them back to get the next one.
Right. In alphabetical order?
In alphabetical order.
That, that is correct.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
When we bring all three of them back in, what do we do then?
We will begin to have a dialogue collectively as a council, unless you want to do that before they come in.
Is their interview over when we take them back out?
Yes. Typically, that interview process would be over with for any one-on-one dialogue with that individual. I think at that point, if they're going to come back in, then we could do it one of two things. We have the discussion with them in another room, or we have the discussion with them in a room. But then that's the opportunity for us to have that discussion collectively as a council, whether it's, I think this person is the greatest, and this is why I'm picking, however, however that discussion. Any other? I see councilmember.
Yeah, I don't know that I'm comfortable with that.
Would you prefer to do it, have the discussion without them in a room?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Everybody good with that?
Pull them back in at the final.
And then call them back in at the final? And they can go and watch it afterwards anyway. It's public, public information, public record. So is that how we want to do it?
Yes.
Bring them in each, three?
If we're done voting.
Then we'll have a discussion as a council collectively? If we, once we make a decision, whatever that decision may be in, then we'll, we'll invite them in?
Yep.
At that point? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to bring them all three back in and let them know what our decision was. I will explain the process to each one of them before they get started.
The first interview will be with Alexander Boxner.
Good afternoon, sir. First off, we would like to thank you for, for being an applicant for our city attorney's position. And we are going to follow a format that I will explain to you. And each candidate will have that same exact format. You will have an opportunity for an opening statement. After that opening statement, each council member will have the opportunity, if they desire to, to ask one question. You'll have the opportunity to respond to that question. And then once we go through all eight council members, then you will be given an opportunity to have a closing statement. Any questions with that?
No, Lisa.
Okay. Thank you. Please state your name for the record and, and go ahead with your opening statement.
Well, Alexander Boxner, thank you very much for having me here. I really do appreciate the time that I spent with you, all of you yesterday, including, you know, some of your staff members as well. It was a great opportunity, really great experience. And I want to thank you for having me here present. It was a really great, great experience for me, and I really do appreciate you guys having me here today. So in reference to, I guess, an opening statement or kind of, you know, to give you a little bit about myself, I know that we've, you know, we had one-on-one conversations yesterday, so I know that I'm going to repeat some of that. But ultimately, I'm the deputy county attorney for Sarasota County. I've been practicing essentially governmental law for more than 20 years across the state. Predominantly, I've been up in Miami Beach, which I was there for approximately 13 years. I've also been with the county attorney's office in Marion, or the county attorney's office in Charlotte. And I've also worked, you know, essentially in-house counsel for a corporation. And not to mention, I've also done municipal work over in Palm Beach County for a slew of, of cities and counties. So I've got extensive knowledge, experience, and expertise in handling just about anything that the city of Cape Coral may ultimately experience in the future for what its growth, development, redevelopment, and anything else that may be a quality of life matter that's going to be presented. So I've got that experience, I've got that knowledge, and I've successfully been able to do that across the entire state. And I know that you have certain legal issues that may not be the same as, as up on the East Coast. But let me assure you of one thing. I have dealt with almost every single legal issue, and I've done so successfully. And I've all, have ultimately been able to, you know, really have a legitimate and, and a good result for the municipality that I work for. And I'm certain that I can guarantee that same result for you as well. So I know that, I know that there's a lot of discussion that we've had in regards to kind of some of the legal issues. And I just want to let you know that I've had that experience. I've also working with the county and also working with the municipality. I know that is an important relationship that I can navigate because I do presently work for Sarasota County. I've worked for Miami Beach. And I know there's always an interplay between the county and municipalities. And that is an essential thing that, that I can bring to the table that I suspect not anyone else really can at this point in time. And I've navigated that successfully.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk, if you could go down a roll and give each council member the opportunity to ask her one question?
Yes, Your Honor. Long?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for being here again, and I appreciated our time yesterday. I'm going to ask this question, I believe I asked it of you yesterday, but I think it would be beneficial for the collective body here to, to hear each of your responses. And what, in your opinion, makes someone successful in this role?
To be a successful city attorney, it requires to be very straightforward, be direct, and have the ability to understand that you're dealing with, you know, you're dealing with different individuals that have maybe a different agenda or a different idea of where they want the city to go. And I think that's important in order to remember that while I understand the political implications that all of you may have and all of you may factor, I think a real successful city attorney needs to step aside and not let that political, political influence, political factor, political winds to alter their legal advice. And, and I've, I made that abundantly clear, I think, to all of you, and I'm going to say it to you right now. I understand that there is a political process, and I understand that you are all elected officials. But I am apolitical. I do not, I do not change or alter my political position. Excuse me, I don't, do not alter or change my legal advice based upon your political position. As I stated to you before in our one-on-one meetings, I'm going to say it to you now that the legal advice that I would provide to councilman Long is the same one that I'll provide to the mayor. It will not change. It will give you options. It will identify the risks. And then at that point in time, it'll be ultimately up to you, and I can have that conversation in public if, if that is what it is that you want to do. So I do not change my legal advice because I realize that a vote may go a certain way. I, I have integrity, I have self-respect, and I wouldn't want to do you folks a disservice. And I believe that is an important element and an important component. Not to mention, I'm pretty straightforward, and I, and I tell you like it is. And, and I think that's an important element as well. Understanding that, you know, you may not want to hear what I want to say, but I think I need to say it anyway. And I think that's important. Thank you.
Shepherd?
As you know, all, all cities in Florida are different. All unique in their own way. The path that you see our city going on, what do you think your strong points are that can help this city move forward with past experience?
Well, certainly, I think, you know, in my view and, and kind of understanding where the city is going right now, I know that you have the opportunity for some development, and that development is an important aspect. And to properly develop the city to get it where you folks want it to go, I think is an important element. I think you need a lawyer, someone who is cognizant enough to understand that it takes a team approach, a collaboration amongst the city managers yourselves and ultimately the city attorney in order to meet those expectations and those goals. So the development is one aspect that's really relatively straightforward in order to have the legal guidance that's necessary to accomplish that. So it is going to take this city to its next level. But I think also an important component is redevelopment. Redevelopment is also a very important aspect as well. And I've dealt with that issue in Miami Beach. Miami Beach is predominantly redevelopment in a sense of, you know, more denser, more higher, and, and more of an impact. So in that regard, you know, those are, those are some of the skills that I bring to the table, but those are not all the skills that I bring to the table. I've had the experience to represent the police department, to represent the fire department, and almost every other department with, within local government. So in that regard, I can provide that legal counsel to you on almost every single level where you folks may want to see yourselves go in the foreseeable future from five to 10 years. And I can assist and make sure that that happens in the way that you folks direct the city manager and the city attorney to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Alex, of all the questions that I asked you yesterday, I think the one that I'd like for my council members to hear your response to most is thoughts, your thoughts on using outside counsel?
Will do. So I really have kind of a, a totality of the circumstances approach, to be frankly honest. And I know I didn't use that word yesterday, and I know I've spoke with some of you all. I've got to look at a couple of different things. First and foremost, we have a legal issue or a legal challenge. Depending on the circumstances, I have a limited amount of staff, and that limited amount of staff may not be necessarily as, as intimately involved with a specific area of law. And that would require me first and foremost to get an expert, someone that may ultimately practice exclusively within a certain area. And the example I think I gave to some of you is, in the city of Miami Beach, I had a situation where I needed someone to deal with permitting issues, both at the federal and the state level for, for a C-wall that was ultimately. So that was something that required an expert knowledge that ultimately, within the city attorney's office, no one really had the expertise. Could we have learned it? Could we have ascertained that, yes, but the council was trying to move on in a more expeditious manner? So that's one aspect of it. The other aspect is if there is in fact a legal challenge, something that requires me to really make sure that, that we take a, a defensible position where we're supported in the sense that we expect a certain outcome. I, I would look to get outside counsel in order to assist us in that endeavor because it may be of such a serious issue to the, to the council that I want to make sure that I give it the direction and attention that it needs. And I may need some additional resources by getting outside, some outside lawyers to assist in that regard. And then the, the last factor that I really factor into is, you know, I've worked at both city and county, and I know that I've got day in, day out responsibilities. And if, if I were going to essentially immerse myself, for example, in a federal lawsuit, it may ultimately take up a lot of staff time, a lot of resources. And by doing that, I think that would be problematic to do the day-in, day-out work. And that would ultimately jeopardize what it is that I think that is necessary for a proper administration by the city attorney's office to ensure that the day-in, day-out work is completed. So those are all the aspects that I would factor into in obtaining outside counsel. And certainly, I would have that conversation with you all one-on-one to get a better feel for where you are standing in regards to doing that.
Thank you.
Welsh?
I just want to thank you for the time we had yesterday. I, I don't really have anything other than what councilmember Long and Stanky already asked you. So I'm going to reserve some time for my other council members to ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a pleasure meeting you as well.
Costin?
Thank you. My question is, how do you envision the role of city attorney as it relates to the city council?
So as far as I'm concerned, I think that the city attorney, taking a step back, the city attorney ultimately has to work with the city manager. And I've expressed that to you folks in our one-on-ones. But more importantly, at the end of the day, I realize that I am your legal counsel. And I am also legal counsel on behalf of the entire council as a whole, and of course, the city. So in terms of my relationship with you, I like to think that I would be a trusted advisor, someone that ultimately you can have a conversation with me one-on-one, that I would keep your confidence in, in check, certainly never offer that to anyone else, and to make sure that I provide you unbridled, direct legal advice and counsel when you need it and when it's necessary. So I think that that is an important role. It's a role that I think that is critical as a lawyer to make sure that, that we have that relationship, both one-on-one and also as, as, as a council as a whole. So I view it as more of a trusted advisor that if there's anything that you may think of, that you want to discuss, you'll be. of, that you want to discuss, you'll be able to have that conversation with me, and I'll be able to answer your questions to your satisfaction.
Thank you.
Cummings?
Thanks, it was a pleasure getting to know you two yesterday. So the question I have for you is, give us an example of a time when you negotiated an agreement for a client municipality to resolve a complicated issue without litigation?
That's a tough one. Sorry, that's a tough one, because normally litigation is a driving force by way of which there's a resolution. I would probably, I would have to probably reflect that outside of litigation where we, where I was involved with in terms of allowing a business to resume operations after it had been shut down by the co-compliance department and the police department because of certain state law and city law violations, that we allowed them to resume their operations without there being litigation, provided they gave us certain concessions. Those concessions are reports and other criteria where the code and police were allowed to go in there without any type of Fourth Amendment violation, so that we can monitor the situation. This was a nightclub, dance club, where there was a little bit of impropriety that took place. So in that regard, we were able to resolve the conflict without there being litigation. I got some concessions for the city, confirmed with the city manager and the city council, the city commissioners at the time, that that was an acceptable resolution considering that there was a media event, and then ultimately, it resulted in a, essentially a resolution without there being litigation, because we did shut down their business operations for quite a period of time. And that's the best one I could think of, but normally, we get sued and then we have to deal with it.
Thank you, that was a good one.
Genter?
Thank you. Actually, Councilmember Cosden asked a similar question to that, so I'm going to go to my secondary question. As a candidate for this position, if you had to list three qualities that you feel best make you the right candidate, what would those three individual qualities be?
Integrity, knowledge, and the ability to take a step back and listen before making any determination.
Okay, thank you.
Hayden?
I'll have to give my colleagues credit, I wrote down like six questions, and they've all been asked, so you and I will wing it on this one and have a conversation about something that may touch on all of them. But again, thank you for your interest in the position, but if you reviewed the city charter and looked at our development codes and our future land use and the unique characteristics of this city, and possibly one issue maybe that you can focus on, where do you believe your talents and your strengths might be able to help this city move forward with our future growth and our development opportunities?
I think the one advantage that I may have is, you know, I've seen what works and what doesn't work, for example, in Miami Beach. I know that the legal issues and the development issues in Marion County are not quite the same as Miami Beach, and they're certainly not the same as in Sarasota County or Charlotte County. And the distinction that I have is that I've been in the forefront of all of that. I know what works, I know what doesn't work, and I know how to work outside the box in order to get what you folks want to do ultimately accomplished when you provide that policy direction to the city manager, and that city manager ultimately has to make that happen. I've drafted legislation, I've drafted land development ordinances, and I've done them to the effect of where it is that this council may want to go in terms of whether or not it's a redevelopment, a development, a development order, or possibly even an overlay district. So I've got that experience, I've got that knowledge, and I know how to make that happen because I take a step back knowing that I've been challenged on a number of different occasions on making something happen, and I think outside the box in order to make that happen. And to do that, you need someone that's had that experience across the state, because that is an invaluable experience.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe everyone's had an opportunity to ask her one question, so this would be the opportunity for you to give us a closing statement.
All right, so I want to again, thank you all, it's been a great experience, I really appreciate all the questions. You sort of reminded me of a little bit of Miami Beach, of my former elected officials there, so that was a kind of a welcoming back home. Ultimately, I'm going to say that I believe that I am the right candidate for it is that this city wants to go. I got the impression that all of you are looking to elevate Cape Coral to its next level. That next level is going to be based upon, you know, where it is that you envision the city to be, and I think that you need someone that has a more dynamic personality, dynamic legal experience, to ability to really bring that to work with your city manager and with all of your department directors in order to make that happen. I believe that I am that individual, I have the right skill set, I have the right knowledge, and I'm hoping that you will select me as your next city attorney, because I would love the opportunity to work with all of you in the city and along with the city manager and all the department heads. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. What we're going to do now in the process is you're going to go back into the room, we'll have the next candidate, and at some point, we'll invite all three of you back into the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, before the next candidate comes in, I was thinking about something that since this is an open meeting that's being televised, Madam City Clerk, did our candidates have access to their cell phones?
Before we began the meeting, we placed them in a special room with the city clerk's representative to make sure they were not utilizing any electronic devices.
Okay, so they have no access to information at all, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that, because that's an important detail when we do this, and, you know, having decided not to bring them back in during our discussion. Thank you.
The next interview is with Jennifer Cockcroft.
Good afternoon, and first and foremost, let me say thank you for applying for the position of our city attorney. And before we get started, I'd like to let you know the format that we will be utilizing.
Thank you.
You will have the opportunity for an opening statement. After the opening statement, each council member will have the opportunity to ask you one question. After each council member asks a question if they so desire, then we will give you the opportunity for a closing statement. Once the closing statement is completed, then we will ask you to go back into the room that you were just in. At some point, we will ask all three candidates to come back into the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So go ahead with your opening statement.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me to interview with you this afternoon, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you again. I, my name is Jennifer Cockcroft, I'm a lawyer with approximately 20 years of government experience, 19 or so of that has been in-house as a municipal attorney. I am board certified in local city and county government law since 2018, and I will be renewing that this year in 2023. I look forward to the opportunity to answer your questions, and I appreciate having the opportunity to interview with you. My experience has been primarily, like I said, in-house, but I also have one year of practice in land use and representation of developers. And thank you very much, and I appreciate your questions.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, if you would, go ahead.
Long?
Thank you, and thank you for being here. So I asked you this yesterday, I'm going to ask you now for the benefit of my council members here, and your response. In your opinion, what makes someone successful in this role?
In this role?
A city attorney, yes.
A city attorney to be successful in this role has to be an open and receptive individual who's willing to work with your city council and also with the city staff in order to meet the goals of the council, and also to help the department heads and the city staff in their day-to-day needs in making the city run in the best way possible for the citizens of Cape Coral. Thank you.
Shepherd?
No questions?
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi there.
If you would, could, same question that I asked, one of the questions asked yesterday, if you could share with my council members, what are your thoughts on when and if to use outside counsel?
My thoughts on outside counsel, if given the preference, obviously, I would defer to the wisdom of the council if they disagreed, but I generally feel like complex issues should be handled by outside counsel if they're outside of the realm of the city attorneys that you have in-house. I believe that generally, from day-to-day, the job of the city attorney is to meet the needs of the council, like I said, and also the city staff. And the day-to-day needs of the city as a whole can be very time-consuming, just with respect to the council members, particularly, you have a large council, and with as many staffs and boards as you have, it's important to meet the needs of the city and those needs from day-to-day to help the city run. And I believe you can handle some matters in-house, small litigation matters, forfeitures, small claim suits, perhaps some nuisance abatements, or things of that nature, but I believe the city would be best served generally with complex litigation handled by outside counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welch?
Again, as the last interviewee was in, I want to say thank you for the time that we got to spend yesterday.
Thank you.
And I unfortunately was unprepared with other questions to bring up, and I don't have any question, thank you.
Cosden?
Thank you. How do you envision your role, or I'm sorry, the role of city attorney as it relates to the city council?
The role of the city attorney as, with respect to the city council, is to obviously work with you and find out what your needs and your goals are, and work with you, be open to having an open-door policy with the city council, so that whenever, you know, you have needs or questions, the attorney would be open and available to you to help you work through those needs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cummings?
Yes. It was nice meeting you too.
Nice meeting you, thank you.
And thank you for your time. So I have a question to ask you. The city of Cape Coral is attempting to obtain an easement over part of a private parcel of a property to facilitate public purpose construction. The property owner refuses to grant the easement. What strategy would you recommend that the city council employ to obtain the easement?
Well, I would, generally, when I try to obtain easements for the city, I try to work with my public works department, and generally, you would reach out to them in person to try to work with them, to try to meet their needs, and try to get that voluntarily at first. I generally find that it's going to be more cost-efficient to work with them in a cordial manner and obtain that with, you know, without respect to ending up in a taking or eminent domain situation. That's how I have handled it in the past, and I've had pretty great success doing it that way. So working with them in person, reaching out to them, having a meeting, following up with a letter, and all the associated documents, I really haven't had a lot of failure in that regard. Generally, all of my acquisitions for easements have been successful voluntarily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Genter?
Thank you. If you could list three characteristics that you feel makes you the best candidate, what would those three characteristics be and why?
I feel my characteristics are, I'm very responsible, and I feel that's obviously important for a city attorney, you have to be able to handle your responsibilities, meet the needs of the council, the staff, and the citizens. I feel that I am very, my personality is very approachable, and I find that that's a very good quality to have as a city attorney, so that you can work with people, and working with people is very important. You have to maintain relationships, that's how you get the most done, in my opinion. If you can't work with people and work through things, you're not going to get a lot done. Another characteristic of mine that I find is important would be hard-working. I am very, I take a lot of pride in my work, I do good work product, and I make sure that I'm providing you the best work product that I can provide, so that the city has the best work product put forward, the best ordinances, the best contracts, the most, you know, thought-out. I take a lot of pride in my work product.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hayden?
Jennifer, thanks for your interest, I appreciate it. As you reviewed our charter.
Yes, sir.
Our comp plan, the unique characteristics of this city, how do you believe your skills might be, and if you could maybe pinpoint one issue that the city is, might currently be working through, how it might impact its future, but how that one issue and your skills might help bring that issue forward?
Meaning one of like the hot topic issues going on?
Yeah, hot topic issue, or something that you saw, you said, well, I might have done it this way, or I think this would be my approach?
Well, I did read through your charter, and I have watched some of the meetings. I'm not sure what I would do different with respect to the yacht club issues that you're going through, like I watched that meeting last night. I think it's obviously a hard issue that you have to work through, and you can't always make everybody happy. I don't know how much role the city attorney would have in that, other than to suggest perhaps a community meeting to work through some of that, to see what maybe some viable options are to work through that. That's about the only thing I could think of with respect to that, maybe to get on the same page with some of the citizens and work through some of the costs, and see what your options really are in the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the last council member?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, this gives you the opportunity for your closing statement.
Thank you. Pardon the cough drop. So again, I appreciate you having me in for the interview, I did enjoy meeting with all of you yesterday, and I have enjoyed being in your city, it's a very nice place to live, and I hope that if, given the opportunity, that we can work going forward with some of those issues, and I can help you work out creative solutions to any problems that you're facing. And again, I do have almost 20 years' experience in municipal law, and I feel like I bring a lot to the table to help you move forward with your legal issues. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and again, thank you for applying, and if you would please, though, direct you back to the room that you were in, and at some point, we'll ask all three of you to come in again.
All right, great, thank you, have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Mayor, I apologize if I did the two different questions. I'll keep the last one, the third. I apologize.
The next interview is with Mark Moriarty.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Before we get started, I'd like to inform you of the format that we'll utilize, we've used this format with all the other candidates. First, we will give you an opportunity to make an opening statement, after which each council member will have the opportunity to ask one question if they so desire, and then after each council member asks a question, then you'll have the opportunity for a closing statement. Once you're finished with your closing statement, we're going to ask you to go back to the room where you were just at, and at some point, we will invite all three of the candidates back into the meeting. So if you'd like, go ahead and start with your opening statements, and before you get started... And before you get started, thank you very much, you know, for applying for the position. And with that, I'll let you start.
May it please the city council, my name is Mark Moriarty. I presently am an assistant city attorney for the city of Cape Coral. I've been a municipal attorney for 26 years. Ninety to 95 percent of my experience has been involved in municipal law. My career started in Fort Myers. I worked there approximately 14 to 17 years. I was also the risk manager in Fort Myers. An opportunity opened in southern Sarasota County. The city of Northport was transitioning from a private law firm to an in-house department. I submitted my resume, was selected, and am proud to say that I started that office. I brought that, all the legal work in-house, transitioning to the firm. My time at Northport, it came to an end. It was time for me to leave, and Dolores Menendez had an open position. So, I applied, she hired me, and I was extremely fortunate, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to have known Dolores and be introduced to this city. While working in Fort Myers, Fort Myers has an expression, maybe you've heard of it. They're very proud of it. It's something along the lines of that Thomas Edison said, "There's one Fort Myers, and 15 million people are going to learn about it." I think what's probably more true is that there's one Cape Coral, and more than 15 million people are going to hear about Cape Coral before they learn about Fort Myers. My time here at Cape Coral has just been, just filled with pleasant surprises. I applied for the job because I know I can do the job. I've done the job, and if I'm the selected candidate, I know I'll do a good job for you. My decision to apply came down basically to two reasons. The first, I don't get the sense from anybody on this council, and not just this council, I've been here since Ms. Wiki was the mayor, is here because they need a job. I get the sense from everybody, just watching some of the votes that you've had to make, particularly in the past six months, you've had some challenge, challenges. You have been put into some spots that have been, for me, looking at where you're sitting, I would imagine and envision that they're very difficult decisions to make. And what I was reluctant, when I was thinking about applying, when I looked at how this council operated, I didn't get the sense that anybody up there was just counting how many people were wearing blue in the chambers, or how many people were wearing black, and making a determination based on that. What I saw, and what I found appealing, and why, one of the reasons why I applied, is that all of you seem to make the decision based upon solid reasoning. You're bringing your personal and your private experiences to bear to the city council. You're here, you debate about it, and you come up with a decision. And for someone in my position, applying, that is someone that I, that is a council that I can get behind. That is a council that I can work for. The second reason why I applied is your staff. You have some quality people in this organization. Prior to coming to Cape Coral, it was customary to try to find the weak link, and you would have to work around the weak link, if I'm making myself clear. If there was a particular department, or an employee, or something in another jurisdiction, in order to get your job done, you had to figure out a way to work with the limitations, if you will. I don't find that here. It's very reassuring. Every time I turn around, the staff is just a pleasure to work with, and leaders in their field. And if I can just highlight, give you an example of what I'm talking about, is I've recently been told that your procurement department averages, averages $275 million worth of contracts a year. I've been here five years, and I do not mean to take sole credit for this. There is a team of people behind this. That's over a billion dollars since I've been here of just contracts, purchase orders that have flowed through the city. And it's, since I've been here, there've only been two challenges, which to me is unheard of. And thank, one, a formal challenge, and one, an informal challenge. And I'm happy to say that both, the city won on both of them. So, that, I mean, that's just an example of the professionalism. So, if deciding to, whether or not to apply, that was the two reasons, is that I could work for a council that seemed to be making cogent, articulated, reasoned votes, and a staff that I would at least be able to work with, and I wouldn't be without proper resources.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. If you could start the questioning, please.
Long?
For being here and for your interest, I'm going to ask you the same question I asked the others. What makes someone successful in the role of city attorney?
The city attorney needs to be a generalist, needs to know a sufficient amount of the law on a broad spectrum of issues. A successful city attorney needs to be able to listen, needs to be able to separate the wheat from the chaff, needs to be able to get to the salient facts, and then needs to be able to communicate back to you and evaluate your exposure and the laws of the case, or the laws of whatever the initiative is.
Shepherd?
Thank you for applying. You obviously know where the city is heading. We're growing in leaps. Things are changing. What skill set do you think that you can amplify, being in charge of that office, to bring us forward with the new challenges?
Councilmember Shepherd, I realize that this is a billion-dollar organization. I realize there are just under 2,000 employees. And if you look at that from a law of averages, you are going to have, regardless of what type of form of government you have, what type of lawyer you have, what, who you have on your staff, just the law of averages, you're going to have a certain amount of issues that arise. So, moving forward, is the city attorney's office needs to be positioned to handle those issues, or to anticipate those issues coming in. And when I look at the current structure of the office, and I look at its organization, and then when I look to Lee County, or I look to Charlotte County, and I see that the basic structure is the same, it appears that the office is well-organized and ready for those inevitable issues that are going to come in. One thing that I think that I could do differently is make myself more accessible to the council. And an idea that I have is if I'm the selected candidate, is I understand the city manager does walk-arounds, or reviews the agenda prior to agenda meetings, and I would happily make myself available to those if the individual council members would like my presence at those meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mark, thank you for the time that we spent together and for being here today. I'd like to just have you share your response to one of the questions that I asked for the rest of my colleagues, and that is, what are your thoughts on when and if to use outside counsel?
Yes, thank you. May I use the current ones as an examples of, in response to your question?
As long as you can.
Okay, so, we currently have a land deal. It's a sizable land deal that's on the table. The land deal was pretty much constructed and put together by your staff. And then, we went to an outside law firm to look at it, and also to give us, to give the city, the extra coverage of the law firm's malpractice insurance. So, in the event that that land deal falls through, and there is malpractice somewhere in the consummation of that deal, that is an extra avenue that the city would have if the city was finding itself in a deficit or in a liability situation. So, on big-ticket items, or big land items, there is something called title insurance that the city attorney's office is not an underwriter. So, if I'm the selected candidate, my recommendation to you all would be to get title insurance, or find a lawyer that has malpractice insurance, and use that to help protect the deal. The second area is, we're currently in, have a litigation, and it's potentially fact-intensive. It's potentially evidentiary, a lot of evidence. There's no doubt in my history, and in what your staff that you have in the office right now, that we could handle that litigation. But the issue then becomes, does it swamp the office? Is the office doing anything else but focusing in on that litigation? You know, are we doing the trial exhibits? Are we getting all the depositions done? Are we doing all the follow-up? Because when you're on a docket, and when you're getting ready for trial, it's go-time. You're doing nothing else. So, in those types of situations where there's heavy litigation, or heavy evidence, or a lot of documents, it's a good, it's my advice that you get a firm, which we recommended to the council, that is certified in litigation. And when we brought that firm in, we, the office specifically asked, if this goes to trial, are you going to be prepared to be in that posture to file the documentation, to be ready with all of the trial exhibits, all of the interrogatories, you know, have everything filed and chronicized for the judge? And then, the third, is that there are some issues that are just so important to the community that you want the best. You know, if the community, if there are some issues that the community is so interested in, then I would recognize or submit to you that you would want to go out to the firm that has the prior general counsel for the Florida Department of Environmental Protection on it. So, you're getting the best representation that you can get. So, at least the citizenry has the assurance that the city council is doing everything it can in that initiative.
Thank you.
Welsh?
No question.
Cosden?
Thank you. How do you envision the city attorney's role as it relates to the city council?
I work for you. Full stop.
Thank you.
Cummings?
Hi, Mark. Thanks for applying. I have a question for you. Make sure it's the same one here. Okay, "The city of Cape Coral is attempting to obtain an easement over part of a private parcel of a property to facilitate public-purpose construction. The property owner refuses to grant the easement. What strategy would you recommend that the city council employ to obtain the easement?"
And it's for a temporary, it's for a construction project?
Yep. Attempting to obtain an easement over part of a private parcel of property to facilitate public-purpose construction.
Yeah.
The property owner refuses to grant the easement. What strategy would you recommend that the city council employ to obtain the easement?
So, there are two avenues. We can go in with a club, or we can go in with finesse. Nine times out of 10, there is a ability to reach a compromise. If I'm the candidate, I'm going to suggest that we try, exhaust every ability to reach a compromise. If it's just for a construction project that's one day is going to be completed, and the person is going to get their property back, and the city is going to indemnify the property owner, but look, any damages you get, we're going to cover. In my experience, that has been successful. I understand that there may be times when that is not as successful, and that's when we can go in with your police powers and do something along the lines of an eminent domain, or along the lines of a taking. But that, I would, I would probably use that as a last resort.
Thank you.
Gunter?
Thank you, Mark, and I appreciate you applying and being here today. My question to you is, if you had to identify three characteristics or three attributes that you feel you have to be the best candidate, what would those attributes be and why?
If you look at my resume, Mayor, I've started an in-house legal department. I left an assistant city attorney position and went to a city that was in-housing their legal services, and it required incredible amounts of work. And for the first year, I was pretty much doing it by myself. So, to me, that demonstrates that I'm hard-working, I'm focused, I'm going to get the job done. You tell me to charge the hill, I'm going to charge the hill. I'm competent that I can, that I do the job. And I think that's four. I don't, I lost count, but I can go on if you want me to go on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hayden?
Mark, thanks for your interest, and thanks for your service to the city. As you work with our charter, and you work with our comp plan, and our future land-use decisions over the many years, is there one issue circulating out there that with your legal experience, you might be able to advise us to look at it a little bit differently than maybe we have in the past as we look at future development?
Councilmember, that's going to be on a case-by-case basis. This city is so large, again, you're a billion-dollar organization, so for me to try to say there's one greater than another, you're going to get them all. It's just a matter of time, just by your sheer volume and what you're doing. I would like to point out that Northport is also a pre-platted community, so I do have all of that experience there. Cape Coral is the pre-platted community. I mean, that is a unique, that has nuances all to, unto itself. And many times, when developers or developers' attorneys from across the state contact the city attorney's office, that's where we spend a lot of our efforts. And it takes a while because they're so, they have a pattern of doing things, and it takes a lot of discussion with them to make them realize the nuances that make Cape Coral.
Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mark, this is the opportunity for your closing statement, and I'll give you that opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you for the time. Thank you for considering me. The issue that I see is the paramount issue walking in the door, is that you were serviced by a city attorney who, you know, the New York Yankees, the New Yorkers referred to the Yankee Stadium as the house that Ruth built. And I understand Cape Coral has many leaders to it, and I understand Cape Coral, there's a lot of people that made Cape Coral successful and where it is today. But from the shoes that I stand in, I refer to Cape Coral as the house that Menendez built. Part of deciding to run was knowing that nobody remembers who succeeded Babe Ruth. I do, you want to know? It's George Twinkletoe Selkirk. Nobody remembers George Twinkletoe Selkirk. They all remember Babe Ruth. So, I mean, Dolores had a panache. She loved the job. She loved the city. And it's my goal to help the city transition as best it can in that regard. So, thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to apply.
Thank you, sir. And he'll go ahead, and he'll escort you back over to the room that you were in before, and at some point, we'll invite the candidates back in.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, I think now's the opportunity, while I will open the floor up for any discussion from any council members, I think first and foremost, a question that we have to ask ourselves is, do we have a viable candidate to replace, you know, our city attorney? So, I think that's one of the questions that we need to answer, and if that answer is yes, whom your candidate that you feel is the best, the best candidate to fill the role of city attorney? So, with that being said, Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, to answer the first part of your question, I guess we can armchair quarterback this all day long. Why didn't we get more candidates? What were the reasons for that? The boundaries are such that you have to be a licensed Florida attorney to apply for this job, so other candidates that might apply from out of state weren't really going to be a factor. Could we have put the salary range into the notice of the position? We could, we didn't. So, I focused on these three candidates. When I read the resumes, I had one thought, and I think what's amazing, anytime you do an interview, is that interview that blows you away. It's a surprise. Didn't expect it. Because of his directness, his forthcomingness, his knowledge of the city, of what he has experienced, what he's done for this city, his loyalties, how much he would enjoy working with staff, and with this council, I changed from one person to Mark Moriarty as my choice. Seldom, and I've done hundreds of job interviews, are there special moments where you just, you feel something about a person? And I felt that with Mark yesterday, from the first question asked to the end of the interview. And there can be certain things in a resume that, they don't mean a lot when you first see them, but when you're committed to go in the distance, and you got a guy that's run 13 marathons, you know, he's not in it for a sprint. He knows that dedication to a job takes time to develop, takes time to nurture, and I think he can lead a talented staff, I think he can work with us well, and for me, for me, he's the right choice. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so to address the two, I guess, options that we have before us, similarly, I'll start out the same as Councilmember Hayden did, in first wondering, you know, are there others out there? Was there other opportunities that may have been presented to us if something was done differently? Just circumstances as they are, they weren't. I did, was told throughout the process that we did not post the salary range, is my understanding that the salary range was not posted? Can we confirm that, I guess, from HR before we?
There's a certain amount of salary.
Okay, yeah, so, just me personally, being in that industry, and I think anybody just collectively, a lot of times when you get applicants, or you're looking for a job, you'll see that a lot of the postings that don't have those ranges get passed over, for one reason or another. So, did we limit ourselves in that regard? Possibly. You know, the other instance that Councilmember Hayden said, that's also a valid point, with regards to the certification. But on the other end, do I think that we've got someone here before us that could do the job? I think that that could be the case as well. So, for me, I'm struggling between the classic conundrum of the grass is always greener, I think, I don't think there's anything wrong with thinking that way, but I also would hate the way that, Mr. Mayor, that you put it, at the onset of this, was keeping in mind that if we did go with the grass is always greener approach, and went out and rebid it, number one, we won't find anyone as qualified, and number two, the people that are here before us today that I believe are qualified, will no longer be there, or may not no longer be there. With that being said, for me, the way I kind of approached this is, and I think all of you did in your own way, was I let them tell me a little bit about themselves in our one-on-ones, but I also told them a little bit about what I wanted, what I expected from the position, and some of the shortcomings that I think that we had in this position prior to, in my personal opinion. And so, what I was looking for today, and part of the reason why I kind of wanted to give them the opportunity to speak, to whatever extent that they felt they needed to, is, to me, in this profession, a brilliant mind, part of it is the ability to understand and receive information, but also adapt to that information. And so, what I was listening to, and this will be different for each one of you, is whether or not some of the things that they responded to today were formed in response to maybe something that I had said to them yesterday, or maybe something that one of you guys had said to them that had changed from when they originally spoke to you. Again, every one of these individuals are qualified, but for me, in my opinion, if we were picking one of the three before us today, my decision would be to move forward with Mr. Bosner. Just in my interactions with him, and speaking with other individuals locally, and on the other coast, that have had experiences with him in his roles in the past, all have been positive remarks. And I just think that someone, someone like Mr. Bosner, with that experience, would be beneficial to come in here, and hit the ground running, and do, you know, what he thinks is best for the community, but also working well with council, and making sure that he responds to our needs in an efficient way. So, for me, it would be Bosner. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie?
Thank you, Mayor. There's always more people out there, always. And so, we could get, you know, we could kick the can down the road as long as we wanted to, and there would always be more road to kick it down, so I absolutely believe there's someone in the room before us today that can do the job, and do the job well, so I believe we can make a decision with what we have. I think that while certainly the law is, can be a relatively cold subject, I believe being able to bring warmth, and bring relationship to the issues, you know, that befall us and the other people that have to be dealt with, and the ability to work with all different personality types, and whatnot, I think is really important. So, I think relationship management is equally as important to understanding the law, and experience certainly is required. I also considered the domino effect. We've lost, in Dolores, we've lost a longstanding, very knowledgeable member of our legal team. We'll be losing Brian as well. And while I do believe at any time that we really should try to favor promoting from within, one of the things that happens when you promote from within is you do cause a domino effect. And so, we would deal with the domino effect with an internal candidate, and whoever would be selected for the position certainly needs a tremendous amount of support, and certainly having history along with the support is important. And so, in my interviews, I was impressed with all the resumes, just without question, I was impressed with all the resumes. But the words in the resumes, and the answers to the questions, and the demeanor in the interview, just everything seemed to pop for me with Mr. Boxner. So, of the three, for all the reasons I stated, at this moment, until I hear other opinions, I would be leaning towards Mr. Boxner.
Councilmember Cosdine?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wouldn't be in favor of going back out for new applicants. I think we have two amazing applicants here today. I'm actually torn between two, Mr. Boxner and Mr. Moriarty. Mr. Moriarty obviously has experience in the city, and before that, almost all of his experience is municipal. But Mr. Boxner also has a lot of experience. So, I come into this meeting undecided, and I'm still undecided, so I'll listen to what everyone has to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Cummings?
Thank you. This was definitely very difficult. It's very hard, but I feel like we have good candidates, we don't need to look outside. And I did make my decision, and it was very hard. And I made my decision mainly because we have a lot of things that we're facing with a growing city, and with the few of you that you have stated, it's kind of my thoughts and my feelings as well. And I am, once again, rate candidates, it was very, very difficult. I want to make this clear. It was very tough. But I am going for Mr. Alex Bosner. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you, Mayor. When we all received the resume packets, I read through them, and saw that all three candidates were highly qualified. And from the resumes, I kind of formed my opinion on one of them until we actually had our one-on-one interviews, in which the other two candidates actually stepped up, and to me, were better candidates. So, it doesn't always show that whatever's on paper always looks the best, a lot of it is the one-on-ones we had. So, to answer the first question, I don't believe that we need to research more. I'm confident that, of the three applicants we have, that we can come to a decision on one of them, and help the city move forward. And are we talking, I still wouldn't mind listening to the rest of the council members, but I have no problem picking between one of the three. Thank you.
Thank you. Since there's no other lights on, I guess I'll jump in here at this point. I also reviewed all the resumes of each three of the candidates. I too agree that there is a qualified applicant in the three. Actually, I think there's probably two that are qualified. So, for me personally, I can make a choice from the three applicants that we have before us today. Like I'd mentioned before, in the early part of our meeting, is one of the things that you have to be aware of, is if we did, the majority of us did want to go in that direction, to go out and look again, chances are, we would probably possibly lose the candidates that we have now. And there may be a point of no return. We may have the best candidate in front of us. So, for me, I can make the decision today. You know, in my interviews, one of the things that I was trying to determine was who's going to take us to the next level? You know, our community is about 55% built out, we have a long way to go. Who did I feel was the best individual that I thought could take us to the next level? I will tell you that I am a firm believer in upward mobility within an organization. I've always advocated for that. I think that's important, for many reasons. But throughout this process, for me, the best candidate that kept rising to the top, whether it was when I reviewed the applications, or the resumes, or during my discussions So, for me, listening to what each of the candidates had to say in my one-on-ones, listening to their presentation here today, I still find myself at the same spot. So, for me, I feel the best candidate that's going to move our city forward to the next level, because of their experience, would be Mr. Boxner. That would be my choice. So, I think we still have to hear from Councilmember Shepherd, and I think a couple of people are still on the fence.
It was a tough decision. I too liked moving up from within, but I decided on Alex Boxner.
So, I think we have Councilmember Cosdine, and Councilmember Welsh, if that's helped you in making your decision any easier. Councilmember Cosdine, you want to go first?
Some of the comments that were made about Mr. Boxner validated my feelings about him, so I'm going to go with Mr. Boxner.
Yeah, I didn't know if we were doing a voting, but I would have said.
Yeah, at some point, we were.
Yeah. I did too, had a great interview with Mr. Boxner, and he was my top choice amongst the three.
And I guess before we have a motion, I think another important aspect that we need to talk about, whoever that individual is, is what is the next step? I think that's very important for us as a council. I will tell you, and not necessarily that that's set in stone, what has happened previously in our search of a city manager, that once a candidate was identified, then typically the mayor, which at that time was Mayor Covell, and the candidate that the council had picked, had sat down to try to negotiate a contract. And if that's the direction that we go in, that's fine, but I think that it would be important today, before we get to that, if there's any concerns, any, anything that you may want to see in that contract, that maybe we didn't have before? I have a few ideals myself, but we make these decisions collectively. So, I think no matter who the individual is to negotiate the contract, it would be helpful, especially if it's me, to know the box that I'm working in, the box that you're comfortable with, and which you're looking for. So, that would be helpful for me. The other thing that we could consider is, once we have that possible negotiated contract, that I can bring it back to maybe a committee of a whole meeting, and we can discuss it before that actual offer is made, which I think would be a good idea. Because whatever the contract is, I want to make sure that all eight of us here are comfortable with how that contract's negotiated, what the salary range is, because it's not me making this decision if I'm negotiating a contract, we all have to be comfortable with this together. So, for me, I would like to maybe, if I'm going to be that individual, to kind of give me some thoughts that you may have in negotiating this contract. I think it would be important for that individual to go and negotiate the contract, and then bring it back before we actually offer it. So, that would be my preference, and I think that would give us all the opportunity to be a part of the process as well. So, I think it's something that we need to talk about at some point today as well. And with that being said, is there a motion to make an appointment, or to at least, not necessarily make an appointment, but a motion to engage in a possible negotiation for a contract for the position of our city attorney?
I'll make that motion for Mr. Boxner.
And does the second agree?
Yep.
Is there any other discussion on that? Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll on that, please?
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinkie?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosdine?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. So, I think the next discussion, is there anything that you're looking for in the contract, and whom do you want to negotiate that contract? I think is the next order of business that we got to try to determine here.
of how it's always been. That makes the most sense to me. I guess just a comment more than a sort of direction as far as your parameters. I don't know that I'm really equipped today to kind of set specific parameters. I don't know, for example, if I've got enough data to try to figure out what a salary range should be or shouldn't be. I would appreciate more time to look through the existing contract that we have to maybe see where some of the pitfalls have been in the past. But with that being said, I know time is also of the essence, and then we're also about to go into a hiatus, so I don't know how we... How long does this process typically take? What, in your opinion, Ms. Nego, if you could, would be a reasonable expectation from the applicant as far as how long the negotiating process should take? Just so I can kind of get a better idea from a scheduling standpoint for us and some of the discussions that we might have.
Lisa Nego, once something is offered out, solid offer out, because today you're going to...
Like so.
Once the actual pay and the contract...
Is the mic on?
Doesn't appear to be.
Maybe a little closer there. There we go.
Okay.
How about that?
Yes. Okay. Once an offer's actually extended, because today you're just deciding on what individual, but when the offer's actually extended, when actual conversation begins, which can begin now, they can take just up to a couple of weeks. They could take five minutes, but they will probably take... You're talking to attorneys, you're making an offer to an attorney, so it will take a couple of weeks probably for them to read through and look through things. I am looking at a calendar here, and your next cow is on the 19th, which is five weeks from today. In our market, that's a bit of a timeframe. Four weeks is the first regular meeting. So as these weeks go on, maybe looking at even a sooner timeframe to have a final, maybe a quick discussion with everyone, once you get your parameters today, Mayor, to negotiate with, you negotiate with those, bring them back, and then you should be done. That would just be my suggestion with that. But I'm sure the individual would take, to Councilmember Long's question, would take a good couple of weeks to look through.
Yeah, I think, thank you for that input. I think also...
And they have to give notice as well, sorry.
Right. So I think also, you know, we don't have to make that decision day for these parameters. But with that being said, as our HR director stated, we're getting ready to go to hiatus. And I think, I know that I have completed a little bit of research, or our office has, on salary ranges when we were having a discussion on deputy city attorneys. And what I had asked is to get some data on what the city attorney's salary was and what the deputy city attorney's. I know we do have some of that information available. I'm thinking, even though we are going on hiatus, I think that we maybe give it about a week or so, where we all can kind of do our own due diligence and maybe come up with some ideals that we have, and then come back for a discussion so we can identify the parameters that I had spoken about. And I know we're going on hiatus, but this is a very important decision that we are making. I would, I'd be willing to maybe try to come up with a date today that we come back. That would give us opportunity, not only for staff, if any of us have any questions for our HR department, if we want our staff to provide any data, that gives them the opportunity, and then decide on a date to come back at a later time to have that discussion, to try to develop that box I was telling you about. And then once we do that, then I can sit down. And if I'm chosen to be that individual, knowing what the parameters are and the box that I have to work in, then I can try to negotiate that particular type of contract. And it's not only monetarily, it's any other information you want to put in the contract, whether it's severance, whether, you know, it's what occurs if, you know, you decide to move in a direction without cause, pretty much everything that's in our contract now, in my opinion, is open for a discussion. Just because we've done it this way in the past doesn't mean that's the best way for us to move forward.
Yeah, just to add, just to add to that as far as data, so the most recent was February 2023. We have the comparable cities reported out and also the top 10. And some do as we do, which is we just place the pay, some actually have a range, so we do have that information. It had been previously shared at the February timeframe. We can get that back out to you, you know, and the 75th percentile is applied to that, so you have that data to look, you know, to look at. So that is as of February, which is very recent.
Okay, well, with that being said, I know we have a few more lights on, so let's get through that first. Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Deputy City Attorney, I have a question for you. With the, what the mayor just talked about submitting contract recommendations, does that need to happen in a meeting because it could be a sunshine issue?
Yes, it does. I would say this is another area. You know, usually there's a time. Usually it is what the local employees get. They're usually all...
It's microphone.
Is your microphone on, sir?
Let me get back. Yeah, of course, there's salary, there's the leave time, which is usually what management employees get. There's a car allowance. Dolores did not have that. Her, you got to remember, her contract went back to 1990? No, 2001. Okay? So, you know, you're talking 22 years. There's also the health benefits, which they usually get as the employee. Then they either decide whether they want to get into the pension or the 401A. We don't have a 401K, it's a 401A. The statute, there's a statute out there that now limits severance pay to 20 weeks. So Dolores's contract had, I recall, six months, nine months? I mean, I forget what it was. That would not work now. It would be against the statute. So most everybody that, or most contracts, I see for city attorneys have the max. Nobody goes below it. Okay? Basically, it's your salary. I mean, and I think, I don't know Mr. Boxner, but he's going to have an idea of what the salary is here. I know what he's making now, so...
Could you share that with us, because I don't know?
Yeah.
Narlock has some of that information.
Yeah, yeah. I think it was about $203,000.
Okay.
Okay. Could have been $25,000, it could be more by now.
Yep.
I really don't know. So, yes, it would be. I don't want to prolong this, and I, where you're talking, it may prolong it. You may want to have, if it is going to be the mayor, talk to him and see what his range may be or what he wants, and, you know, if you give some discretion to the mayor, you know, he comes in and says, "I want $350,000," well, of course, that's not going to happen. Okay? So, and then come back at a COW meeting or come back at a special meeting and talk about it. And at that point in time, it could be negotiated right here. Unfortunately, we've been through that before, at least I've been in this position here, before Dolores was selected city attorney. And when it happened like that, that particular candidate got up and left. So you got to be careful about that. So, because it does get, I don't want to say contentious, it's just like he, he thought this job was worth a certain amount and council did not. And unfortunately, it ended up in a public meeting instead of being negotiated privately and kind of worked out and then coming with a contract that everybody agrees to at that point in time.
And the recruitment firm, Ms. Narlock, I do believe she, her role would be to assist with that in those conversations and supply some of that information as well.
Looking at the calendar, you know, today is Wednesday, the 14th. And what I've heard here, you know, it may be an advantage for someone, whether that's myself or someone else, to sit down and try to hear what the candidate that we have chosen, what they're looking for. And I can bring that information back to council as well. What I was thinking, today is the 14th, maybe I can get with the candidate sometime next week and have a one-on-one discussion. And then on the Monday, the 26th, if that happens to work with council, that we can come together as a council and have that collective discussion. I can advise you what the candidate told me, and then we can have this discussion and try to develop what we want collectively as a contract. So that would be my recommendation. Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. If we have to come back on the 26th, I'm fine with that, but if we have to wait until after hiatus, I'm also fine with that, too. I think any one of the three candidates or the candidate that we selected knows that we started this a few months ago, and it's a, it's a pretty big position. So to wait a week or two weeks extra, I don't think it's going to dissuade them from accepting the position. So whatever, whatever collectively we decide, if it does mean we come back on that Monday or we wait until the COW, so be it. Because I mean, coming into contracts or things that we ran into with Dolores's contract being so old, I would like the opportunity to talk with HR on a few things and then bring them to you for your negotiations on it. One thing off the top of my head, I know we were dealing with both of the contracts that we had, is we had to notice like six months in advance of non-renewal. So that seemed to be more of an issue of us noticing than it just being an issue of things like that. So I'd like to at least discuss with HR why that is so far away, of six months before the contract ends, why can't it be two months or three months? And, you know, automatic increases and things of that such. So if I can, I can get that done within a week and a half if we want to do a special meeting on the 26th, or I have no problem waiting until we come back from hiatus. And I would hope that the candidate that we selected knows that we want to get this right because they're planning on being here for quite a long time, not just a three-year term. Thank you.
Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. I'm definitely fine with June 26th. And kind of trying to look at everything put together. He is moving, you know, with him coming in, he'd be living here. So would that be covering his moving expenses, too? And would you be putting that in the contract as well?
Yeah, like I said, I think everything is on the table. I think just because we might have done it a particular way in the past doesn't mean we have to continue that. Also, moving forward, whether it's, you know, having a discussion about car allowance or moving expense, I think everything's on the table.
Okay.
So that's something that we will talk about, you know, when we come back. Unfortunately, we have a little bit of a time restraint today, so I think we're almost compelled to come back and have that discussion. I personally believe it's better sooner rather than later.
I do, too. I mean, I'm fine with June 26th, so...
Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. I've been involved with executive search, selection, and placement in the public sector, not in, not in the governmental sector. And so, one, two things that were most important at this point then, one was speed and one As time passes, and it isn't going to take much time, word's going to travel. This is a public meeting, and word's going to travel. If I were in any one of the three candidate's shoes, I would want something very quickly. So I think, unfortunately, just because we're going on hiatus doesn't mean we can delay dealing with this issue. I think it has to be dealt with quickly. I think if a contract needs to, if Dolores's contract or another contract, one of our more newly hired members of the legal team, whichever contract's going to be the straw dog, it needs to get out to us right away. We need to redline, make notes, whatever we have to do, so that our chosen candidate can sit down with whomever is going to negotiate absolutely as quickly as possible. So whatever that takes.
Okay, and I think it'd be important, maybe staff can provide this, you know, looking back over the last several appointments, just to kind of give us a baseline. Not saying that's set in stone. Maybe we get the contract we had with our previous city manager, and maybe the previous city manager, which was Mr. Zurlag prior to that, and then also our city attorney's contract. We could have staff provide those contracts to us, so we can review those contracts and see what's in there and see if that's something similar that we want to do. And then on the 26th, have that discussion, if that's the date that we choose. And if that is the date, I would recommend 9:00 AM in the morning, but whatever works for my colleagues. But that's something else, if we are going to go with the 26th, what time on the 26th? Councilmember Long?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we might be getting a little too ahead of ourselves here. I mean, the hard part for me was getting to this point. I don't know that the salary is something that we need so many cooks in the kitchen. I don't mind letting the mayor, you know, have some discretion in making that negotiating point like Mr. Bartosz had said. And then it sounds like almost every point of the contract, with the exception of the salary, is more or less going to be a pretty boilerplate, so to speak. So I mean, if with the council, with the mayor's negotiation and whatever that result comes from, Mr. Bartosz putting forth something that more or less is kind of plug and play with regards to the salary and maybe a few other points, then they bring that to us, and at that point in time, we would then have that discussion all at once. I don't think it would be conducive to wait, have a discussion about what we wanted it, and then go back and do that all over again. That can still happen in the same timeline, I think, within, you know, by the 26th, I'm okay with that. That date works for me as well. But for me, there's not a lot to work with, and, you know, you have the data in front of you, the same data that we're going to have with regards to the salary. I don't think if we kind of let you have free rein with that discussion, that you're going to be too far off of where we'd all end up anyways. So when we get to that point where we review it, it's, we're probably talking about a few thousand dollars. So I think we're spending more time here than we need to on how we want to go through the particularities of something that we probably don't have a lot of discretion or as much as we think we have with regards to the contract.
And we are talking about an attorney who may have his own contract...
That's correct.
...with certain things, so you may be negotiating against yourself. I mean, if he brings something to the, to the table that doesn't have a car allowance, well, then, okay, fine. You know? So...
Well, I mean, and I'm willing to try to sit down with the, with the candidate between now and the 26th and work out a negotiation, but just make sure that he understands that this is just a draft that I will be bringing back to council. And then on the 26th, if I have that by then, we'll meet on the 26th, and we'll have that discussion, and, you know, we can tweak it from there, you know, and then, then make a formalized...
Yeah, the way I see it, our part should be done on the 26th. We bring us something, we tweak it to whatever extent we're able to, that we can collectively agree to, and then we would be transmitting basically what we would authorize you to sign with whatever changes that we've all agreed upon. And that way, it's completely out of our domain, and then it would be whether, it would be up to the candidate whether or not they'd like to sign it. That's how I see that playing out.
Okay.
So that would be a special regular meeting, voting meeting?
Yes, yes. Okay. Councilmember Steinke.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that we establish a contract review team comprised of the mayor, our deputy attorney, and Lisa, to assemble a, if you will, fill-in-the-blank contract and to authorize the mayor to engage with the candidate.
My only problem is I'm out of here Friday until the 26th. I'm on vacation.
I believe, well, go ahead and finish your motion.
I think you can...
I think Gail could make.
Yeah. It could be somebody in the office. Don't be sped. Finish your motion.
Well, let me, let me just fix it, so that we don't have to go back and amend it and whatnot. The, the group would be comprised of the mayor, a member of our, our legal staff, and a member of our HR staff, to address a contract that could be used as a guide for a conversation with the candidate, between the mayor and the candidate, to bring a proposed contract back to council on a special meeting on the 26th, that we can fine-tune for final offer to the candidate.
I'll second that.
Regular special meeting. Okay, and I'll jump in here real quick, you know, before I call roll or open up the discussion, I think what we have to understand, that this, first of all, is going to be a legal contract, so I, I agree that someone from our city attorney's office, whether it be Brian or someone else, surely it can't be Mark, so someone else in the office, whoever you may designate if you're not here, so to help facilitate that contract. But I think this is a contract between the city council and this individual, and it's a legal document. Our HR department is in charge of staff, and not the city auditor, the city manager, or the city attorney. So, I don't think that the HR department, because of that, should be a part of this process.
Agreed.
So, that's, that's my opinion on that. So, I think we do the, whatever that contract is going to be, since it is a legal document, our city attorney's office has to be a part of that process, but, other than that, it's the eight of us. So, that's my position. Councilmember Steinke?
Thank you. My inclusion of HR was based on the fact that they were the ones that engaged with the search firm, they're the ones that in dealing with the search firm, know what common inclusions in contracts, current lay of the land, so since we relied upon HR to engage with the search firm, and the communication has been back and forth between HR and the search firm, that I believe any information they receive through that, and any information that that search firm can supply to us as it relates to competitiveness of offer, things that are currently on the street, so to speak, of what are attracting candidates and keeping candidates, I think that input would be valuable, but I, I, if, if it's the, if it's the, you know, majority of council that believes that HR should not be involved, I can go with that flow.
And with that being said, as you know, as a council, we have collectively hired a search firm for this process, and typically, I agree, they usually see it to the end, the search firm really didn't work with the HR department, they, they went out on their own, because we hired them, that's what they do for a living. I have no problem incorporating them into the process, I agree with you, I think that would be an advantage, because they are probably used to establishing contracts for upper management-type positions, city attorney and city managers. So, I have no problem engaging with them along this process, but I think it should be the city attorney's office, or, or firm that, that we hired, that we paid for, because I don't think their process is completed yet either, so I have no problem incorporating them, so, that's my opinion.
What are you wanting?
Now, I don't, the motion was to incorporate HR. I don't think HR.
So, I'm willing to amend my motion. I'll amend my motion to including HR, to including, if necessary, our search firm for advice to our city attorney's office and to our mayor in the, in the construction of the contract.
So, just to make sure I heard you correctly, you said include HR and possibly, or did you say exclude HR?
To, to not include HR.
Right, there you go, okay.
But at the mayor and city attorney's office discretion, to call upon our search firm for component parts of the contract.
Okay, and I will do that.
Second.
Second of grace?
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing Madam City Clerk.
Just one more part of the motion is to solidify the time.
Okay, and do we, as a part of that motion, Mr. Motion Maker, is to, to have that special meeting on the 26th at 9:00 AM, for me to bring the draft negotiations back to this body?
I would love to make it for the 26th, although I will not be able to make it at 9:00 AM. My earliest would be 11:30.
Okay, I mean, I'm good with 11:30, 1 o'clock, it doesn't matter.
If, if it's not 9:00 AM, I would prefer it be 4:00 PM. I need to do the beginning or the end of the day, to throw a meeting in the middle on a Monday would just completely wreck my work schedule.
I'm open, so it doesn't matter.
Make it one.
One, I've heard one.
One, one would be good.
It's still in the middle of the day.
That's right in the middle of the day, that disrupts everything for me.
Well, he's saying he, he would prefer to either do it first thing, or, and I want to make sure all eight of us are here, so we got to make sure that, you know, the time works for all of us.
Yeah, so if not 9:00 AM, I prefer 4:00 PM, or 4:30 on a Monday.
Is everybody okay with four, 4:00 PM?
Yeah, that's mine, four. We can do four.
Councilmember Cosin, are you okay with four?
Yeah, we can do four.
Councilmember Long?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so 4:00.
So, I would amend the motion to, to include bringing the, the suggested contract before council on the 26th at a meeting to commence at 4:00 PM.
Second that.
Right, second agrees. All right, and no other discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosin?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, I think the next, do we want to bring in all three of the applicants at the same time, to give them what our decision was, or do we want to do that in some other fashion? Do we want to bring in the individual that we chose first, and then the other two, or how do we want to, how, how do we want to do this?
They would know.
Councilmember Cosin?
Thank you. I think, we talked about bringing them all in at the end, but now that I'm thinking about it, I don't know that that would be productive to bring all three in here, considering two of them are getting bad news, there's no purpose to bring them in here. We could bring the, Mr. Boxner in now, or we could just adjourn the meeting and let him know after.
No, I think we, we have an obligation to tell them some way.
But I do think that we shouldn't bring the other two people in.
Any other thoughts on that? Do we, I guess, do we bring them all three in, or just the?
Bring the winner back.
The one individual? And then, after that individual, bring the other two in and thank them for applying?
I'm for all three, so it's.
Yeah, I don't think.
All three, they're professionals.
We're bringing the two in to say thanks, but no thanks, why don't we just do it all at once, and then they'll get there in the same time?
They're going to know, I only bring one person in here.
If we have to do it at all, that's the way I would do it.
They're going to know.
Yeah, I think they're all professionals, and.
Yeah, yeah.
Good news or bad news, they're, they're going to accept it.
All right, so if you would, please bring all three candidates back in. And Madam City Clerk, was our vote unanimous? I think it was all eight, zero? Yeah. Ask them all three to come and stand in front of the podium. If you would, all three just maybe come in and stand in front of the podium? If you would, all three just maybe come in and stand in front of the podium? Come on in, sir, and maybe I was going to have all three of you stand in front of the podium.
Okay.
Come on in, ma'am, if you would, stand in front of the podium. Thank you. First off, we'd like to thank each and every one of you for applying for our city attorney's position. As you know, it's a very important role in our city, and we didn't take this decision lightly, once each of us had the opportunity to have a one-on-one interview, and also have the public interview that we had here today, and ask some questions. Collectively, as a council, we've come to a determination, and the determination that we have made collectively as a council by an eight-to-zero vote, was for Mr. Boxner to be our next city attorney. So, I just want to thank the other two candidates, we appreciate your desire to, to apply for this position, you know, this is the, the next step, so I would ask Mr. Boxner, if you have a few minutes after our meeting, if you could stop down in my office, and we'll discuss how we will move forward from here. And again, I thank both of you very much for applying, and wish you well, and Mark, we appreciate all your service that you've done for our city up to this point. Thank you. Okay, with that being said, time and place of the future meeting, we have a regular meeting in the Cape Coral City Council, scheduled for Wednesday, June 14th, 2023, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. We also have a summer retreat is scheduled for Thursday, June 15th, 2023, beginning at 9:00 AM at Mercola Market. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.